Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Denver 2020 Town and Darian Planning Board meeting. Board members, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written. Motion by Jay, second by Sean. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting minutes are approved. Okay, first on our dock, we got the public hearing for the Craig Silver project, correct? Seven thirty-five. Glenn, you want to read the articles written in the paper?
Please take notice, the Town and Darian Planning Board will be holding a public hearing to hear the request of Craig Silver of Clements, New York. Craig Silver has submitted an application for a special use permit to install upon. The location of said project would be located at Chick Road, Darian, New York, one four zero four zero, and one six dot dash one dash seven thirty. Said hearing will take place on September twenty-one, twenty twenty, at seven thirty-five P M at the Darian Town Hall, one zero five six nine Allegheny Road, Darian, New York, one four zero four zero.
Thank you, Glenn. Okay. Okay, this time we'll open up the public hearing for Craig Silver's special use permit. Did receive a response back from Jesse County Planning. Date of review date of September tenth, twenty twenty. Advocate's name, Craig Silver. Referral type special use permit, description special use permit to construct a pond. Again, location is Chick Road, Darian, zoning low density residential. Planning board decision, approval with modifications. The explanation as follows. Required modifications that the advocate provides documentation to the town that the site and design have been reviewed and deemed acceptable by the Jesse County Soil and Water Conservation District set forth of town zoning law since eight one six slash B. This required modification proposed pond's opposed no significant county-wide or inter-community impact. Signed, Free Bay Altimary, September tenth, twenty twenty. Jerry, did Mr. Silver submit a letter from Jesse County?
Yep, he brought it inside himself.
You brought it?
He's taking copies.
So, Mr. Silver had received the Jesse County Soil and Water response. Section B date of September tenth, twenty twenty. Addressed to Craig Silver, ninety-seven twenty, Briner Road Clarence. Craig looked at and proposed pond site locations recently. There is no involvement with your wetland streams nor environmentally sensitive areas, also no archeologically sites that are in immediate area. While we're not guaranteed that the site will hold water, this soils map excuse me, soils map indicates that a Fremont soil is a suitable soil for water holding projects. This letter can be used as part of the information needed for the town from the Soil and Water Conservation District that the concrete structure will not cause problems with builders. Feel free to contact for more information, Bob Burkemeyer, technician, Jesse County Soil and Water. So with that, I'll open up the floor if anyone has any questions or concerns for Mr. Silver. Are you here?
Right here.
Hi, how you doing?
Good.
Anyone have any questions or concerns regarding Mr. Silver's pond? If not, we'll keep the meeting open for fifteen minutes. Then, then we'll close it and move on. Okay, what's next on our topic? Glenn Leaven, seven forty-five. Want to do some new business from the floor while we're waiting, Jerry?
Sure. Um, looking to do Mr. Coffin's special use permit applications. Mr. Coffin is looking to put in a pond. We need to bring it up on the map here. Move it over. Down on Ortner Road. Loads. Would be this parcel right here. He's looking to put a pond. More of a not a full-size pond that we would typically see. It's a thirty-foot by seventy-foot pond. And in fact, when Jesse County Soil and Water came out, they looked at the pond. And they said there's no involvement with wetland streams or environmentally environmentally sensitive areas, and also no archeological sites that are in immediate area. As he discussed, when Mr. Coffin proposed pond does not meet Soil and Water's definition of a pond. They called it more of a wild lake wetland or a rain garden. However, under our zoning law, anything that's over one hundred and fifty square feet in size requires a permit for pond. So under our zoning, it requires a pond permit. So that's why the application for Soil and Water didn't have the issue for it.
Okay.
So that's got to be referred to Jesse County for review.
We're doing a letter here from Soil and Water, I see. Board members, anyone have any issues?
No.
If not, I entertain a motion to forward it to County Planning. Motion by Jay, can I have a second? Second by Don. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Mr. Coffin here?
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, Mr. Coffin, we'll have a public hearing here next month. So we'll set that for seven thirty-five? Okay, Mr. Coffin.
Thank you so much.
You are free to go.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. John from Old Dairy?
Yeah, do we have time to move it? Yeah, I just want to make sure we have time. Yep, okay.
This is Freedom?
Yep, Freedom Fellowship down here on Broadway. They're submitting an application for a misused commercial building. They're looking to put in a motor vehicle repair garage, which will be accessory in use to as a vocational training program and a commercial light duty repair. You got the application, they got a copy print of everything I have, got a floor layout, copy of what they're looking to do. Again, this is a special use permit. They've got a variance on some zoning requirements, and now they're here for the special use permit planning work. So again, this is going to get, have to get referred to Jesse County and come back there for public hearing next month.
What's a good thing you're doing, Mr. Cor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there always doing something up there. Yeah, stay busy, I'll give you that.
Essentially going to be multi, there's a print shop as well.
A what?
A print shop. It's going to be on one side of the building and then the vocational hardware on the other side.
Oh, good for you.
There could be like a retail sales area in Queens, so seating for customers and then also to sell clothing, shirts, some of the clothing and stuff under the shop.
Board members, anyone have any questions? Jeremy, there's, I mean, sort of grease traps and all that stuff that has to be dealt with, right?
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff, there's, it's going to have to have an engineered site plan. There's a lot of, you know, requirements under the Uniform Code Mechanical and all that kind of stuff. And then the planning board will address, you know, ingress, egress, parking, lighting, signage and all that stuff when they come back next month.
Yeah. So are you guys actually going to have engineered drawings for next month, or?
I, I have some now with the site plan engineer. We got three engineers working on it. Mechanical engineer from mechanical aspects of it. We have an architectural engineer working on the building itself and then the site planner, he does all the I'm going to the D O T tomorrow and to the Health Department to give them the plans for the septic system and for the parking, or for the entrance, because the entrance has to be expanded from the residential twelve-foot to the commercial standard twenty-four-foot. So we're kind of moving on all in those directions with all that stuff. I do have a plan here if you want to see it.
Yeah, we might look into it, Glenn.
Steven George and stuff. That's pretty much the septic and the layout of the
Are you hoping to break ground this year still, or?
We are.
Yep. It's pretty late in the year.
I'd like to get a building erected and encased so we can work on it indoors.
Going to start the story on this?
No.
Stairs up?
There's stairs up for attic. There's an attic for storage, we've got attic trusses there being
Board members, I entertain a motion to forward it out to County Planning?
Yes.
Motion by Jay, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brandon, all in favor? All right? All opposed? Jerry? We'll set your public hearing next month, Mr. Cor, at seven forty-five?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Do you want those drawings back?
If you don't mind, yeah, that's the only copy I have right now. I just saw it from you guys. I'll have copies next month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I work on either.
Yeah, I'll get it too.
I would anticipate it probably going to be a president here. Martin? And I would anticipate it probably to be somebody here. Okay, you want to open up the public hearing for Mr. Leaven? Glenn?
Please take notice, the Town of Darian Planning Board will be holding a public hearing to hear the request of Glenn Leaven of Watsona County, New York. Glenn Leaven has submitted an application for a special use permit to build a Gamble Brook barn intended for use as a gathering hall. The location of said project would be located at three eight eight Broadway Road, Darian Center, New York, one four zero four zero, and nine dot dash one dash two five dot one two. Said hearing will take place on September twenty-one, twenty twenty, at seven forty-five P M at the Darian Town Hall, one zero five six nine Allegheny Road, Darian, New York, one four zero four zero. Find the order P B C B A code.
Thank you, Glenn. We have received a response back from Jesse County Planning. Review date of, again, September tenth, twenty twenty. Advocate's name, Glenn Leaven slash Flower Creek. Referral type special use permit, description, description, special use permit to build a wedding slash event barn venue. Location, three eighty-eight Broadway Road, New York State Route twenty, Darian. Zoning District Low Density Residential. Planning board decision, approval with modifications with the following explanation. Required modifications are as follows. Number one, the advocate obtained the driveway permit from New York State D O T for the driveway's change of use prior to approval by the town planning board. And two, given that the project will disturb more than one acre of land, the advocate completes the Soil and Water Pollution Prevention Plan, AKA SWEP, prior to final approval from the town. These required modifications propose event venues should pose no significant county-wide or inter-community impact. Signed, Free Bay Altimary, September tenth, twenty twenty. So with that, I'll open the floor up. Any questions regarding the Leaven Flower Creek application for the special use permit? Anyone have any questions? Ma'am?
Uh, I own the property next door to where I believe the event barn will be located. And what I would like to know is the entry dog for the building, is that where there's, it seems to be a temporary runway currently? Or it will be located somewhere else?
Mr. Leaven, is he here?
Yeah, so I believe I'll leave the empty place.
And I have a subsequent question. Again, since I think I'm back up to that quite closely, then is there plans to put any kind of a sound buffer in between the properties and it's, so what might that be?
Yeah, we were thinking about putting a land burn, push up against the class manager of the field day, and I'm also planting rose trees like that's in my, to create a barrier within those two properties.
Jerry, you got any concerns or questions regarding Leaven?
Yeah, there's a map up there. We've got a, should have a copy of that section of the zoning law in the rental hall. Under the site plan reviews, and there's a whole bullet list of things that I think the planning board should take a look at. And I'll move over some of the ones that I know are crossed off here. So rental hall zoning provisions would put in, would address buildings like this at performance standards. But just to go over the performance standards so that the public understands that we're looking at rental hall performance standards, the application shall state that the maximum seating capacity in the rental hall may expand during orders or the capacity shown in part for that. So I think in this case, the application for rental hall, you're looking at the occupancy of two hundred and twenty.
That's correct.
So, so this will be an assembly occupancy, it'll be able to seat two hundred and twenty people in addition to the employees, correct?
Uh, that is right. I believe that's correct.
So how many employees do you figure you would have?
At most, we probably will have five.
Five, so. So the building and with the employees and the occupants would have a maximum capacity of about two hundred and twenty-five. Section B under the performance standards, our memory structures, tent stand or other accessory or temporary structures used to increase the maximum seating capacity are not permitted unless approved in the application of site plan reviews. I know we've covered this, and just so the planning board and I think what it is here to view this and understand, you're not proposing or asking for any additional seating outside of what's going to be in the enclosed building itself.
Yep.
So what they're asking for, for the approval, is just what the building is going to house. And anything that would be added at a later date, say they wanted to expand the capacity and put up, say, additional tenting or occupancy seating outdoors, they would have to reapply for the expanded occupancy. Because that's going to relate right along with parking and, you know, those types of things. Food preparations and kitchens may be permitted on-site for accessory in use to the rental hall. All kitchens and food preparation are subject to approval by the Jesse County Health Department. In this case, you're not having a commercial kitchen, correct? So all food would be catered and brought in.
That's correct.
So there will be no commercial kitchen associated with this, with this venue. Alcohol beverages may be permitted on-site but must comply with provisions of the catering established under New York State Liquor Authority, so that's what covers that. Pyrotechnics may be permitted by issuance of an operating permit to the Town of Darian, which would require any use of pyrotechnics. They would have to apply for a permit. I believe our permit papers are one-off pyrotechnics. I think we changed that. It might be a hundred and fifty dollars or something now. That would be one concern that I would like to address. In this case, there's a lot of, there's a lot of property here. This parcel is is twenty-one point nine nine acres. But the adjacent parcel over here is a dog boarding facility here. And I know that there, you know, with dogs and with having that being a commercial enterprise for those folks, there may be some issues with the use of pyrotechnics. Especially late at night where the dog can't be associated with it. So first I would like to ask the applicants, do you have any plans for the use of any pyrotechnics now and or in the future?
No, we don't intend to.
Okay. So there would be no problem with excluding that from this parcel?
That would be okay.
Okay. Okay. So I think that might be a condition that we should, you know, consider placing on the application, just because you've got different types of uses adjacent to each other.
Hey, Jerry, my claim wrote it this time.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, board members, at this time, is there anyone out there that has any questions regarding to the Craig Silver's special use permit? My application, anyone? At that time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing for the Craig Silver's special use permit. Motion by Sean?
Second.
Second by Jay? All in favor? Aye. Public hearing is now closed. Hey, regarding the Craig Silver's special use permit, will proposed action create a material conflict with the adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
Question number two, will proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
Question three, will proposed action appear to the character or quality of the existing community? Question four, will proposed action have an impact on environmental characteristics that cause establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
Question five, will proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure from mass transit, like here at Walkway?
No.
Question six, will proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy consumption or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Question seven, will proposed action impact existing, A, public-private water supplies?
No.
Question B, public-private waste water achievement utilities?
No.
Question A, will proposed action appear to the character or quality of important historic, archeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Question nine, will proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources, example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora or fauna?
No.
Question ten, will proposed action resolve an increase in potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
Question eleven, will proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
Okay, with that, I entertain a motion for Nega's Declaration on the Seeker.
Make that motion for Nega's Declaration?
Motion by Brandon, can I have a second? Second by Don, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Carry. Nega's Declaration on the Seeker. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Craig Silver's special use permit for a pond. Aye?
We did that.
Yeah. I entertain a motion for Motion by Jay? Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, can I have, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Carry. Okay. Mr. Silver? What work?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Back to the, well, I guess we can open up the David Feniger public hearing as well. Keep it simple, moving right along.
Okay. Want to continue on?
Uh, no, we're going to open up the David Feniger public hearing, and then we'll go back to the
Okay.
Leaven. What have you read?
Please take notice, the Town of Darian Planning Board will be holding a public hearing to hear the request of David Feniger of Parkview, New York. David Feniger has submitted an application for a special use permit. He has a roadside service business. The location of said project would be located at nine eight six four Fargo Road, Parkview, New York, one four zero three six, and one dot dash one dash seven five. Said hearing will take place on September twenty-one, twenty twenty, at seven fifty-five P M at the Darian Town Hall, one zero five six nine Allegheny Road, Darian, New York, one four zero four zero. Find the order P B C B A code.
Thank you, Glenn. Regarding Mr. Feniger's special use permit, we did receive again, Jesse County review, review date of nine ten, twenty twenty. Advocate's name, David Feniger, referral type special use permit. Description, special use permit to operate a roadside service business as a home occupation. Location, nine eight six four Fargo Road, Darian. Zoning District Low Density Residential. Planning board decision, with approval with modifications, with the explanation as follows. As per section eight oh eight of the town zoning law, required modifications are as follows. Number one, the advocate shall not utilize more than five hundred square feet of any buildings on a property for the home occupation. And number two, any proposed signs shall be no larger than four square feet. These required modifications propose home occupations pose no significant county-wide or inter-community impact. Signed, Free Bay Altimary, September tenth, twenty twenty. With that, anyone has any question regarding Mr. Feniger, speak up? Board members, we're back to trying to get the Leaven property done. Anyone? Okay. Sorry, Jerry.
No, that's fine.
Okay, we'll close out the Leaven and then we'll go back to the Feniger.
Yep, okay, and next on the rental hall performance standards, all rental halls should be connected to public water, public sewer, where available, or be approved by Jesse County Health, which is what they're doing. They will have private water and septic there. So that will fall under the jurisdiction of Jesse County. Restaurant facilities leased by the rental hall should be provided on premises. And basically, that standard is in there, so for those that are trying to convert barn, you know, out old agriculture, some of these standards you have to understand there. For people who want to convert old agricultural barns, we have to consider that they have restaurant services on-site, those types of things, so. So if it doesn't quite make sense, it's covering a lot of ground, this is the law. Parking, has to comply with section six oh three of this chapter of the zoning law. He has to be located entirely on-site. So they've got more than enough area for parking. And section six oh three of their zoning law covers, you know, surfacing and review by the town and all those types of things, so. At this point, their engineered site plan, which you have a copy of, you're looking currently at eighty-five cars of which you were proposing, correct? So so that will go along with, you know, reading the provisions of the code and we discuss whether maybe they should add parking, but that's a business decision on their, on their end, you know, how they do the parking as long as they're in compliance with zoning and the Uniform Code. Site plan review will specifically address each of the following items. Maximum lock coverage is outlined in the zoning schedule A. Will not be exceeded for all buildings. They're fine on that. The first big one is permitted hours of operation. They are in a residential zone with adjacent land uses. This is just a street view of going back to the zoning map. The adjacent uses, you've got a, you've got residential and agricultural uses here. You've got a dog kennel here. Mr. Murray, if you're here, how many dogs, why don't you tell us a little bit about your town business, so they understand how many dogs you typically house and the extent of your business?
Currently, we have the capacity for fifteen spaces, basically, for boarding for overnight stays, or daytime stays. Those spaces can hold two larger dogs each, or three smaller, depending on what for even the size. We typically are, we do not have open-closed hours. What we've been doing since taking over the property is negotiating drop-off a couple times with customers. And in some cases, we do have folks that bring their pets early in the morning before going to work when they're going to be leaving on a trip, or if it's just for the day. We also have folks who would be picking up in the evenings after work or again dropping off or picking up, maybe going out.
So I guess, so how many dogs total can you house at capacity?
Um, thirty, I would say thirty-four. Confiscating.
And we've talked about them making some modifications and improving your business there too, so there is room for them to grow also, so I wanted to make my point where the adjacent land use across the street would be basically, it's on that whole area, it's just residence residential. And then farther west, you get into Freedom Fellowship. That gives you an idea. So as far as permitted hours of operation, I'll let the applicant. Why don't you tell us what you kind of have in your business model for hours of operation? And what you would like the planning board to consider for opening hours? and what you would like the planning board to consider for opening hours?
Uh, we anticipate for mostly during the weekday, we may have rentals from possibly about 5:00 to...
There could be early afternoon for weekends.
Yeah, I guess, in my mind, I think what we're looking at is how late at night you would want to operate, you know, if you're gonna be operating till 3:00, 4:00 in the morning, that's different than if you want to operate till, you know...
You would end at 11:00 and make sure everybody, you know, is out by midnight.
Yeah.
Selling music is off at 11:00.
But also, I don't want you to shirt yourself either, like, I know we talked, it's like, it's what you ask for and what you get, make sure that you ask for what you're looking for too, so if you're doing weddings and you think people are gonna be there, and you're gonna close out, have everybody out the door by 1:00 AM, then make sure that's what you ask for also, so...
What is, I mean, bed center is kind of a broad term. What type of clientele are you looking for?
Our main source of business we anticipate to be for weddings at this point, mostly on the weekends, I think, but we're also hoping to fill some weekday slots with stuff like baby showers, wedding showers, smaller scale gatherings of that nature. Nothing, nothing major, no concerts or anything like that, that's...
I think what Jerry's trying to tell you, being frank, don't tell us what you think you want to hear, tell us the truth.
Well, I don't want to hear...
Because you don't want to, you don't, don't, just give me advice to, you know, say what you want to do, because it's easier to get it out now than that, than to have to reprove it when you want to say you want to change it.
Well, one of the main things too is we don't want to be disruptive to the neighborhood, so we don't want to, you know...
Understand, yeah.
...go to 3:00, 4:00 in the morning now.
Just usually if there's alcohol involved, we don't want it to extend sooner late, so we want to have like an exit time, you know, for our own sake as well.
I don't think any later than...
I always thought midnight, but you know, I didn't understand...
So you would, you would shut down at midnight and then have everybody out by 1:00?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, is that what you want to ask for then?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we covered permitted hours. Permissiveness of noise, specifically acceptability of permitted hours of amplified music and acceptability of permitted hours of non-amplified music. Because the town doesn't have an ordinance, we put this in here to cover a broad range of people that may come in with applications. At this point, your venue is gonna be completely contained within the building, so I would assume that your entertainment, if you had any on-site, would be contained within the building, correct?
Yup.
So with that being said, you don't have any anticipation of having outdoor amplified music?
The only possibility I can think of is if we have a ceremony that's on-site, which would be, you know, mid-afternoon type of...
Yeah, but you're not, you're not talking about having a DJ with a sound system, you're talking about having a quartet or having something, you're talking about wedding.
This will have air conditioning?
Yes.
Yeah, so there will be air conditioning.
So, so that will be something that, you know, the planning board could address. Permitted indoor space versus outdoor space, we covered that, they're not having any outdoor assembly. Use separation between the rental hall and adjacent land uses, specifically permitted LVR and MVR districts, sharing setbacks will be doubled, they're fine, you get all kinds of signage, lighting, I've got the here under the special use permit, but really that falls under assigned provisions, so that could be addressed under the zoning codes for assigned electors, or something specific the planning board would like to place into the special use permit. Lighting, I think needs to be addressed specifically in the site plan because you've got, if we go to the street view here, the interesting thing with this parcel is you get kind of rolling hills, so the venue is gonna be kind of up on the hill over there, is that correct, in this general area? So, the one concern I would have is zoning officer looking at the adjacent land uses is if the driveway is coming down here, and coming down off of the field, and people are coming out between the hours of 12:00 and midnight, you're gonna have, because they're coming from east to west as they exit the venue and looking at their site plan, you're gonna have headlights and glare from vehicles, you know, exiting the property, so I would ask, I think it would be appropriate for the planning board to address buffers and berms and/or fencing between the kennel property and the exiting on the driveway there, whether it's vegetation and/or fencing or a combination thereof, I think. And it sounds like they've already, they're already considering that, but I think we need to address that specifically in the special use permit application.
Ma'am, do you have any preference in the case for that?
Uh, Jerry raises a good point.
Some people like berms, some people like hedgerows, some people don't.
I think a tree line would be helpful. And I believe Mr. Laban had mentioned that earlier.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that fencing would apply to the, to the trick.
Mr. Laban, what do you propose?
I think that tree line would be by preferred route too, and we can make adjustments too, but it's not suitable when everything is set up, obviously, we're working together to try to find something that's, you know, suitable. I think a lot of our lighting is going to be lower levels, up to stuff that's not above tree line height. And I think I talked around here a little bit about doing, finding out what lighting is up to.
I think what Jerry's talking about is, as the cars are leaving the property, they're going down a hill, and the way your driveway is set, your headlights would be shining right into, into the, out of your kennels, the yard, you know?
I mean, there's a, there's a natural hedgerow there now, but who knows if that's gonna be there in five or 10 years, or, you know...
And also, there's a slight gap a little bit south, there, there's no trees currently, so there is, there'll definitely be space where we have to plant some trees.
Yeah.
And the vegetation along that current tree line is not in the best of shape, it's a lot of older trees that don't look...
Yeah, there's old evergreens, I think.
There's some mix, so it looks to be maybe some old fruit trees and such.
I helped build that kennel.
I'm sorry?
I helped build that kennel.
You did?
Yeah, Dan Kuduski. Have you bought it from him? No, that was the, that was the owner before you. Bought it from Dan Kuduski, yeah.
The owner of this army was Beth McComber?
Yeah, and they bought it from Dan Kuduski.
Okay.
I originally turned that into a barn in the kennel.
Okay.
Yeah, all kinds of... Okay. Any other comments, Jerry?
Nope.
Board members?
Nope.
Nope.
I mean, I think it's a great thing. Okay, I entertain a motion, or I guess first we entertain a motion to close the public... Anyone, anyone else out there before we close the public hearing, do you have any questions or comments? Anyone? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing regarding the Laban Flower Creek special use permit. Motion by Jay?
I'll second.
Second by Brandon? All in favor? Aye, all opposed? Meeting is now closed, public hearing now closed. Okay, want to move on to the seeker? Question one, will proposed action create a material conflict with the adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
Question two, will proposed action result in a change in the use or density of use of land?
Small.
Will proposed action, excuse me, will proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Question four, will proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause establishment of a critical environmental area? Question five, will proposed action resolve an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure from mass transit, biking, or walkway?
No.
Question six, will proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Question seven, will proposed action impact existing, A, public-private water supplies?
Small impact, right?
Question B, public-private wastewater treatment utilities? Again, very small impact. Question A, will proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Question nine, will proposed action result in adverse change in natural resources, example wetland, water bodies, groundwater, et cetera?
No.
Question nine, will proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
Small.
Question nine, will proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? With that, I entertain a motion for a negative declaration on the Laban seeker. Motion by Sean, have a second? Second by Jay, all in favor? Aye, all opposed? Carry, seeker is, uh, they're negative. With that, I entertain a motion to approve the Laban special use permit with thinking possibly with some of the suggestions that Jerry pointed out.
I'll make the motion with my location, sure I suggested.
Let's, let's read them out, Jerry, was...
Yeah, because I want them in the motion.
Max, maximum capacity with employees of, was it 225?
Yes.
Hours of operation?
Would you say 8:00 AM to midnight?
8:00 AM to 1:00, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, business is qualified, or...
The venue closes at midnight and then empty by 1:00.
Empty by 1:00. Are you okay with that, Mr. Laban? Okay. There'd be no, no power techniques? No outside, uh...
Amplified music.
Amplified music? And no outside structures, correct?
Yeah, they'd reapply if they wanted to expand, yeah, considering the curb install.
Yes. And the tree line, tree line buffer could be installed?
Do you want, do you want to specify any type of particular type of landscaping, you know, well, what would be considered normal? Construction term will...
Yeah, I know, I'm thinking...
What you would use for municipal head buffer?
Yeah. And you guys have anything in mind what you're looking for, if we put in the minutes? Are you looking for, do you have any mind, I'm not trying to pin you down, Mr. Laban, but something to put in the minute minutes?
Of course.
Trees based in, you know, what do you think, like evergreen type trees or something like that, what you're thinking?
I would say evergreen, I think there's a standard, just to the, or just to the last that appropriate, healthy, so I think pines would be...
Then you get, you get your route, you know, buffer from lighting too.
And you're okay with that, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay.
You want, you want to have a minimal sized tree that's acceptable to be planted?
Yeah, I would say like a six foot side, a six foot tree, ten foot on the center, it'll grow pretty fast. Are you okay with that? Are you okay with that, Mr. Laban?
Yes.
You guys, the board members, okay with that?
Yep.
I'm not gonna talk as far as you all, but... We're trying to get you out of here.
That's okay, I have one actual question, uh, Rocker just asked me, we may, for our fire suppression system, need a holding fence at some point, and we were wondering if it constituted an additional structure to the property, or if there was a separate issue?
I don't think that would fall under utilities, would it, Jerry?
Yeah, that'll fall, that'll fall under the uniform code when you submit the plans for your building, so we can discuss all that.
All right, so, thank you.
Okay, Glenn, you got all that? Oh, who was our second? Ah. Yeah, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't asked for a second yet. Yeah, yeah.
Then we'll just get the conditions down.
Yeah. So we have a motion by Jay?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Second by Brandon?
With the conditions.
Motion by Jay with the conditions. And second by Brandon? All in favor? Aye, all opposed? Okay, Mr. Laban, go to work, I hope you do our nice, friendly neighbors for the rest of your lives.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you all. Okay. Mr. Fenniger?
Yes.
Sorry to keep you waiting.
No, that's all right, that's all right.
Anyone here have any questions regarding the Fenniger special use permit? I don't think we have anyone left, so I think we're good. So I entertain a motion to close the Fenniger public hearing. Motion by Sean, second by Jay, all in favor? Aye. Public hearing closed, we'll move on to seeker. Question one, will proposed action create a material conflict with adopted land use or zoning regulation?
No.
Question two, will proposed action result in a change in use or density of use of land?
No.
Question three, will proposed action impair the character or quality of existing community?
No.
Question four, will proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics of establishment of a CEA?
No.
Question five, will proposed action result in adverse change in existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure from mass transit, biking, or walkway?
No.
Question six, will proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Question seven, will proposed action impact existing, A, public-private water supplies?
No.
B, public-private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Question eight, will proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Question nine, will proposed action result in adverse change in natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, et cetera?
No.
Question nine, will proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
Question eleven, will proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
With that, I entertain a motion for a negative declaration on the Fenniger's special use permit? Question, or, motion by Sean, can I have a second? Second by Jay, all in favor? Aye, all opposed? Negative declaration on that. Did I read that, so JSC County read that?
Yes.
Sorry. Okay. With that, no one else, I entertain a motion to approve the Fenniger's special use permit? Motion by Jay, can I have a second? Second by Don, all in favor? Aye, all opposed? Carry. Okay, Mr. Fenniger, go to work. Sorry to keep you waiting.
No, that's all right. Pretty good.
Got any comment about the battery energy storage law, Jerry?
Yes.
What we got, Jerry?
Battery energy storage law, basically, these are for battery energy storage systems, they're commercial, these are unidentified residential and commercial systems. This is something that I started working on, and maybe getting a lot of coach training as coach officers and planning, you know, agents for the towns on these units because they're becoming more common, they're associated with wind farms and solar farms. These are, there's two tiers, basically, our attorney forwarded this to the town board because he felt we should put it in, and at the same time, we've been kind of working on this also, so essentially, with a lot of these things, is with our commercial solar farm energy law, we put it into place, they sort of puts out templates here, they puts is that they would be in low density residential, recreational, commercial zoning districts, that falls in line with, with the language we put in for the commercial solar panels, so the big solar farms, so, because what they do is they put solar farms in, they put battery energy storage units in, the storage units are self-maintained, they come in a fifty-three foot container trailer, they bring them in on site, they're completely self-contained ventilation, wiring, fire suppressive systems, safety, and basically, they put them on a concrete pad, they can daisy jam them together, they can put in one or they can put in a hundred of them, they put them together, they pass some of these security systems. This basically gets, gets reviewed by me, gets forwarded to the planning board, gets referred to as the planning, the public hearings, like anything else, there's talk about signage, lighting, vegetation, tree cutting for protection of fire buffers, noise is negligible, noise and ancillary performance shall not exceed the level of sixty decibels measured at the outside wall, any non-participating residents or occupied community building, there's a decommissioning plan written in here, there's bonding to cover the decommissioning plan, there's site plan applications, and basically, they have to submit all of the engineering, and then the other commercial project we have to submit, such as wind or solar, so that, in a nutshell, is what this is. So at this point, we're looking for any recommendations, comments, concerns of the planning board, to forward back to the town board, then it goes back to the attorney, then it goes back to the town board, they hold a public hearing, and then the public hearing tells you the town board, and then it will become town law. So, any questions, concerns, comments, or otherwise?
None. None of them to me, so they're going to generate power on an off-peak that they're going to store it for.
Yeah.
And the storage batteries are off-peak and solar energy.
Yeah, the solar system generates power during the day, they put it in a battery unit, and then they can see the battery units to feed back to the grid at night when the solar panels are generating, and or when the windmills aren't turning, so, that, that solves the problem, batteries have become so good now, that this solves the problem of the solar and wind not generating energy to the grid on the off-peak hours, so.
Yeah.
So that's what, that's what this does, is it solves that part of the equation.
Do we have any interest in solar farms here?
I had two semi-serious inquiries, first, whether we have zoning, and when I said we did have zoning, it was like, oh, you've got zoning, okay, so, it's like FYI, we're going to look into this, but it'll be, we'll come back and see in a couple years, you know, so there, there are people looking, and there are, I mean, you go to Tommy Potato, they're everywhere.
Yeah.
Solar farms all over the place, it's coming, the battery energy storage units is the next part of that, we want it to last in place.
Yeah, anything wins on its way out, I think, some of the solar.
Yeah, but anyway, I think the planning board is going to have to make a recommendation, I don't know if you have to do is a resolution to forward back to the town board.
Somebody need to have a fight? Soon, probably, right?
Well, there's no timeline attached to it, but.
Okay.
You know, whenever you're ready.
Okay. All right.
I'll make the vote.
Motion by Jay to adjourn, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ben, all in favor? All right, all opposed? Means adjourned.
Quinn, did you give all of them the.